This conference will now be recorded.
All right, good evening. It's Lynn Petroselli. I'm Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Due to the coronavirus nineteen pandemic, we are conducting this meeting on go-to meetings on Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. I will now call any following elected members to speak up if they're present. Gavin Forrester. Ned Streets.
Here.
Mary Young.
Here.
Lorenzo Elder.
Here.
Okay, also ask what alternates are here. Dave DeCilio.
Here.
Ron Ticky. Judy Clary.
Here.
Okay, also President Jay Hibansky, our Planning and Zoning Administrator. Is Alex Florick here or no? Yes, he is.
Yeah, I'm here, Lenny. I'm here.
And Gail DeCilio.
I'm here too.
All right, thank you, Gail. All right, I don't think we have any guests, do we, Jay?
We do not have any guests tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Before I call the meeting to an end, I just want to remind everyone to raise their hand if they would like to be recognized by the Chair in way to be recognized and called on each and every time throughout the meeting. Whoever's speaking, identify yourself by your name and title each time you would like to speak. This is per Governor Lamont's executive order, which allows us to conduct virtual meetings. The public is free to listen, but may speak only at the invitation of the Chair. With that said, I will call the order this monthly session of the Stafford Board of Zoning Appeals at 7:00 P.M. The first item on a public agenda is, and I will have Mary Young could read it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mary Young, speaking. Item number one, forty-eight to fifty-eight Philo Street. Petition of Eric Manley seeking a site plan review and waiver of Section 5.2 regarding the front setback from fifteen feet to the proposed eleven point seven feet incidental to a two-family dwelling in an RM dash one zone. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Eric, I see that you're here, so if you identify yourself and then present your petition.
Hey, how you doing? My name's Eric Manley. I'm the owner at forty-eight fifty-eight Philo Street. So I'm going to be applying for, as you said, instead of the fifteen-foot front yard setback to the proposed eleven point seven in an RM one district for the construction of a new construction to family residence. So what ended up happening was I submitted my original, you know, plan to planning and zoning. And when I started construction, my foundation guy and my excavator came up with different reasons why it would be basically, it would be more, it would be better based on their experience to put it closer to metal B W F. So when they reviewed it, you know, they were like, okay, we'll put it at eleven point seven. So everything that I looked in the zoning book, I was unaware that because it was a corner lot, I needed to have that each side is considered a front yard and needs the fifteen feet. So I okayed it, thinking that because I had ten feet, I was thinking that it was a side yard. And I said that I ended up pouring the foundation. I got my Asbeld Foundation survey, and then when I sent that into John Rostocky, he informed me that because it was a corner lot, I needed, it was considered two front yards technically, and I needed a fifteen-foot setback instead of a, instead of, you know, eleven point seven. And at that point, you know, he told me that, you know, I would have to either correct it or apply for the variance and in order to fix it, I basically, I, the amount of work that it would cause to fit to basically dig up the foundation, re-pour the footers and do everything, I, honestly, I just couldn't afford it. And so I'm applying for the variance over the three point three feet, you know, for unfortunately that situation. And going forward now to this, now I understand that. And I also will go on future projects that I plan on doing. I'll never deviate from the plan. I'll make sure to go out and check, you know, myself, you know, the measurements before, you know, proceeding with construction. Also, if I do have to make any necessary changes, I plan on going through, passing about through planning and zoning to make sure that everything doesn't put us in a situation like this going forward. I appreciate, you know, everybody taking the time to review this, especially with all the added technical difficulties and everything, you know, throughout this process. So I'm very sorry about it. That's all.
All right, thank you. Questions from the Commissioners? Hearing none. Mr. Hibansky, you wish, Miss Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mary Young, for the record. Mr. Manley, have you had a chance to review Jay Hibansky's May twenty-second staff report that he circulated online for anyone to see?
I don't know if I saw that one, but I saw the one I think was May twenty-ninth. Oh, actually, yes. Yep. So, okay, I have it right here.
I want to bring to your attention, I'm glad you have it, at the very bottom of his staff report, he discusses the hardship argument and how it appears that may be self-created, which is not something I understand the ZBA can use as a rationale for granting a variance. I'm wondering if you can speak to that and offer up any additional hardship argument that you think might be useful to anyone who's so inclined to grant you your variance. Thank you.
I appreciate it. It's a valid concern. Yeah, so this is a hundred percent self-inflicted and I, you know, it was my own fault. So, pretty much, so the way that, so I ended up doing modular construction. So I had to order it sixty days, sixty days ahead of time, and then basically build, you know, to fit the, you know, scheduling. So that's when I started construction. And I've been, you know, holding off on that and everything. But it's unfortunate, you know, I'm, I've just, as I said, this is a hundred percent self-inflicted and I have pretty much everything all set up with the permits and everything for the delivery and and unfortunately, I don't want to end up where, you know, if I don't get the variance, unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to finish the house. And I, you know, I'm very, you know, something I pride myself in is like I do, I've done two other houses before, you know, I've done thirteen twenty-eight Elm Street over, on Elm Street, I've done, you know, one seventy-four Mazarick. And I really do like the town of Stratford, and I want to continue doing business in the town of Stratford and, you know, you know, helping, you know, add value to the communities and try to do my part, you know, as a citizen, you know, try to, you know, continue that. So unfortunately, even though it is self-inflicted and I just don't, you know, I just don't want to have a, basically a half-finished house sitting, you know, in Stratford and unfortunately, you know, I wish I had more than that, but now I put myself in quite a pickle here. So that's, I guess that's all. Jay, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. This is Jay Hibansky. I just want to state for the record and for the Commissions, so they're aware. Eric had sent in all of his certificates of mailing notifying all of his neighbors. I also, I had a conversation with the zoning enforcement officer, John Rosowski, this morning about this application, just to get a little bit of detail on the history. And, you know, as Eric mentioned, you know, the original plan that he submitted was the plan that was approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals a year and a half ago. So, you know, without knowing the intent of the applicant, I would say that, you know, it appeared, this appears to be, you know, a mistake. I think that he had no intention of, you know, a misdirection to the office in any way. You know, otherwise, he would not have submitted the original application, I think, in the first place with the correct plans. And then, you know, after conversing with his contractor, he was convinced to do otherwise. So I just, I just wanted to make sure the Commission was aware of that. And, you know, the zoning enforcement officer kind of takes that same opinion that he doesn't think that, you know, it was an honest mistake. So I just wanted to make sure that the Commission heard that. Thank you.
Eric?
Yeah, and just to echo what Jay says, you know, like I just, at the end of the day, it was, broadly, it was an honest mistake. And, you know, I'm trying to, you know, like to do everything, you know, on the up and up, you know, at the town of Stratford and through, you know, zoning and everything. And, you know, I want to try to be as transparent as possible, you know, with everything.
Miss Young, you had your hand up.
Yes, I did. Mary Young, for the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Manley, I appreciate what you are sharing with us this evening. I very much appreciate the written letter that was also posted on the website to us explaining in greater detail what you shared with us tonight. Those who are familiar with me know that at the end of the day, I'm always looking for the hardship argument to enable the ZBA to grant the variances if they're so inclined, for the record. And again, I'm just going to probe a little further and then I'll let others take their turn if they're inclined. I'm looking for something that talks about the unique conditions of the property, not about the people. You seem, again, like a very sincere gentleman. Are we talking about, you know, corner lots, undersized lots? Give me something that talks to me about the property, if you would.
Oh, so, okay, so it is a corner lot. So with, in the RM one district, normally you have a fifteen-foot front yard, ten-foot side yard, and a twenty-five required backyard. So when I approved the change, I figured because it was the side of the house that I only needed the ten-foot setback. But because it was a corner lot, that was when I realized that it was considered tech, when John brought it to my attention, that's when I realized that it was technically considered a front yard and not a side yard. That clarifies that.
Thank you, Mary Young, for the record.
I've unmuted myself. Any other Commissioners have any questions? Hearing none. Is there anyone online that wants to speak in favor of this petition? Again, anyone wants to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Mary Young, motion to close.
Motion by Miss Young, second by Mr. Elder. All is in favor. Any discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 I'm maybe do a roll call to be safe for Mr. Florick. Mr. Elder?
Aye.
Miss Young?
Aye.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Miss Streets?
Aye.
Hear both chests, and I declare the meeting closed. All in favor? Said aye. Okay. I think we can do, my feeling is we can do the administrative session tonight. And I'd like somebody to at least make a motion to go into the administrative session, and then we can have a discussion.
Hold on.
I think you have to close the public hearing first.
I did.
No, you didn't.
You closed back the petition.
What's that?
You closed the petition, not the public hearing.
Right, then I, all right. Now, let's do, I thought the motion was to close the public hearing.
No, it was to close the petition.
All right, somebody make a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing. Lorenzo Elder, for the record.
We have a second?
Ned Streets, second.
Second by Ned Streets. I'll do a roll call. Mr. Elder?
Aye.
Miss Young?
Aye.
Mr. Forrester?
Aye.
Miss Street? Hear both chests, and the, it's closed. Now I'll entertain a motion for administrative session.
Motion to go to administrative session, take item one off the table.
Motion, Mrs. Young, second by Mr. Elder. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Elder?
Aye.
Miss Young?
Aye.
Mr. Forrester?
Aye.
Miss Streets?
Aye.
Hear both chests, administrative session begins. Who would like to speak? Or make a motion? Anyone? Nobody wants to make a motion? If we can close the administrative session, if we're not going to do anything. Mr. Forrester, your light is on. Are you, are you ready to say something? No?
Motion to table item number one.
Motion to table? Is there a second? A second? No discussion. Is there a second on a motion to table?
A second.
Second by Mr. Elder. All is in, I'll do a roll call again. Mr. Elder?
Aye.
Miss Young?
Can someone explain what the motion is, Mr. Forrester? For my edification, what was your motion to do?
Motion to table petition of forty-eight fifty Philo Street. Nobody made a motion to approve. Nobody made a motion to deny. There was silence for thirty seconds. So the next logical thing is to put it back on the table and table it. Eight weeks means we take no action. I will be more than happy to withdraw my motion if somebody wants to take action on the petition.
Thank you for explaining. I'm not familiar with the tabling terminology, so I appreciate the education.
Mr. Elder, go ahead. Miss Young, go ahead. Continue.
Again, just from my own education, Mr. Forrester is being very indulgent, for which I'm grateful. So tabling would suggest we would then potentially convene next month to render a decision if we're unable to this month. Or if we're able to make a decision this month, we may not have the need for a meeting next month. Making me excited by the idea of potentially trying to rally the troops tonight to render a decision if anyone, to Mr. Forrester's point, is willing to make a motion to enable discussion.
Mr. Forrester, can I ask you to withdraw your motion and see if we get any discussion?
I will withdraw the motion.
Mr. Elder, you seconded it. Withdraw your second.
Yes.
Okay. Now, is there any discussion on the petition? I can't make, well, I could make a motion under our rules, but.
I'll make a motion to approve the petition.
A second.
Second by Mr. Elder. Any discussion? Miss Young?
My discussion is to respectfully request either the gentleman who made the motion or the gentleman who seconded the motion to add to their motion their reason for their motion, the hardship that they're going to use to support their motion.
Yeah, the hardship that was requested. Mr. Elder, you have a comment?
Well, I just basically feel like Mr. Manley has been an honest broker here. And, you know, it was an honest mistake. And, you know, like, we don't want to make him suffer even more. If, and he said, this will never happen again. So I don't feel like we should drag him over the code. That's my opinion on it. And so that's how I feel, and that's why I'm seconding the motion to approve.
Mr. Hibansky?
I might add the suggestion for a reason that might be a bit more compelling than what was stated by the applicant is the presence or the subject site being a cornered lot, thus complicating the interpretation of the zoning regulation.
Mr. Forrester?
While I understand an honest mistake, my concern is establishing a precedent. The precedent that we're going to establish here, if we approve this application, will be that someone can make their own interpretation about what an application, what in this instance, a variance was granted, what a lot is, and then make the determination that, oh, yeah, okay, that's a side lot, not a front lot. Therefore, it's an honest mistake. I'm not saying it's not an honest mistake. But what do we do with the next honest mistake comes forward, and then the next honest mistake after that, and then the next honest mistake after that? There's no repercussions for making an honest mistake. And that's a concern that I have, that once we establish a precedent, and in this case, the hardship in my estimation is self-created. A corner lot is not a hardship. I mean, let's be real here. A corner lot is not a hardship. There are tons of corner lots that are constructed, remodeled, developed within zoning regulations. So a corner lot's not a hardship. If the Commission wants to give the gentleman a break, all for it. He's done excellent work in the two previous locations that he's done in Stratford, and I'm not here to punish anybody. But I'm also not here to set a precedent and kind of just pull things out of the air and make up excuses as we go along. I mean, I've made an honest mistake and made a left-hand turn in New York City when it says no left-hand turn, and I didn't read the sign correctly. That honest mistake cost me a hundred and fifty bucks. Honest mistake, but I got no consideration for my honest mistake. So I just don't want to go down a path where we're establishing precedents. As such, I'm going to vote no for the approval. And that's it.
Well, we normally take each petition on its own merits anyway. So I wouldn't say you're setting a precedent.
Well, I respectfully disagree with you, Mr. Chairman, because one of the things that we're here to do is to find a hardship in a piece of property. And because someone made a mistake, and we're going to claim the hardship to be a corner lot, the next one that comes up, well, you know, it's a corner lot. So I really want to move my foundation, you know, ten feet over because it looks aesthetically better and I think I can sell the property better, and I don't have to do this, and I don't have to do that to the property. And you're already on and said, and corner lots are hardship. Because that's the hardship that we're using or the rationale we're using in this petition, that the corner lot is a hardship. But when the next person comes forward and says, well, you gave a hardship on one piece of property, I'm asking you, you know, I think I can get a better resale value, market value. I'll save money on my connections to sanitary sewers, whatever the case might be. Then you're establishing, in my essence, a precedent. Because another person can come forward, not have a hardship other than the fact it's a corner lot. It could save them five feet on their hookup connection and say, that's what I want to do, and the hardship is going to save me money. So it's just something, this is not the approach that I took when I was on the zoning commission. And this is probably the approach I'm going to take here.
Miss Young?
Mary Young, for the record. I concur with Mr. Forrester that I think, I'll use the word pattern. There's a concern that a pattern might develop if word gets out on the street that a mistake equals a hardship. So I appreciate him articulating that he is concerned about that. I think Attorney Florick will confirm that precedent is not something that the ZBA sets. Patterns perhaps, but not precedent. As Mr. Chairman described, we take each case on its own merits and decide accordingly, so we're not bound to repeat any decision tonight, again, if we're given a similar set of facts. I have a question for Mr. Hibansky. And he can tell me if it's too late to get it on the record, but I will, since I spoke about Mr. Hibansky's comments, my question relates to something in his comments. Mr. Hibansky, there was discussion of a cherry tree, if I recall. Potentially a unique circumstance. If we allow Mr. Manley to do what he's going to do, it might save the cherry tree. If there were a motion made this evening to grant the variance, potentially because of the corner lot issue and the misunderstanding about interpreting the zoning regulations by the applicant, would you allow the potential for a condition that the cherry tree must be saved? Did I understand your comments correctly, or perhaps you can clarify? Thank you.
Yes, hi, Jay Hibansky here. Yeah, the applicant mentioned in his, in his letter that, you know, one of the, one of the benefits that would happen if the variance was granted was that an existing cherry tree might possibly not have to be removed. That was, that wording was a little loose for my liking.
Yeah, mine too.
I would say, yeah, unfortunately, the applicant can't speak, sorry, Eric, during this session. It's only, only staff and Commission. You know, I would say that that's certainly something, if the board decided that they were going to approve this application, you could certainly condition that the cherry tree must remain.
Yeah, somebody could add an amendment to the motion, which I would accept, as the person making the motion.
Mr. Chairman, Mary Young, can you remind me where we're at? What motion is on the table? Who made it?
I made the motion, and Lorenzo seconded to approve the petition. That's where we stand right now.
And would you accept the friendly amendment to add the condition as articulated by Mr. Hibansky?
Yes. And Mr. Elder, would you go along with that since you seconded it?
I will. I will.
So we're adding that, your comment, Mr. Hibansky, that the tree gets saved
as a condition of approval?
I, Mary Young, I have nothing else for the record.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners wish to address this? All right, hearing, Mr. Elder?
Yeah, just quickly. And I know Mr. Manley, he's done stuff, but houses before, I don't know. But from the information I have tonight, he said he's worked on a number of houses. But, you know, and I hear Mr. Forrester, Commissioner Forrester, concerns about setting a pattern or precedent. But a lot of times, you know, like laypeople don't understand a lot of things, and we could get caught up in things. You know, I'm learning this as I go. And so I think it's only fair that we do take each case on an individual application. Because, you know, I made some honest mistakes, and thank God I wasn't held to them. And there were some that weren't so honest, and I was held to. So, you know, I can appreciate Mr. Manley's concerns, and that's all I need to say.
Thank you, Mr. Elder. Any other Commissioners wish to comment? Mr. Forrester?
Question through you, Mr. Florick. Mr. Florick, when you go into court to defend this Board of Zoning Appeals for a decision that it made, how strong of an argument does the opposition have that the Commission has developed a pattern or made an exception in the past?
To your point earlier, in now, there are cases in zoning where, say, if this board were to grant nine variances such as this, and then the tenth person came along and asked for one, and you didn't give it to them, that they conceivably could allege that the board was discriminating against them. I can't say that the ZBA has established any sort of practice at this point. You know, I would just advise the ZBA to, you know, at this point, judge this application on merits. And that Commissioner Forrester's concerns should be recognized, you know, going forward, that, you know, you don't want to get into a, to a pattern of just, just giving out variances to everybody because they're supposed to be used sparingly.
Thank you, Mr. Florick.
I yield.
Any other Commissioner wish to speak? All right, hearing none. Mr. DeCilio, would you just read to the, I mean, I know what it is, but I'll have you read it, what the motion is on the table that we're going to be voting on?
Oh, the motion to approve with the stipulation that the cherry tree is saved.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so a yes vote means you're approving the petition, and no vote means you're opposed. I'll start with Mr. Elder.
Yes.
Miss Young?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
No.
Miss Streets?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passed, petition is approved four to one. Okay, at this point, entertain a motion to adjourn.
What about the minutes to the part?
Actually, let's close the administrative session before we adjourn.
Don't we have the approval of the minutes of last month?
Say, oh, that's right. Say, oh, that's right, where's my, you're right. Don't go away. This was short anyway.
Motion to approve the minutes of May 18th?
Yes. entertain a motion, Mr. Forrester?
Correct.
I have a second?
Mary Young, second?
Second by Mary. Any discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Alright, carried unanimously. And side plan review, Mr. Hibansky?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we've got no other items remaining on the agenda that I have.
Okay. Do you have any members' concerns or comments? Mr. Forrester?
Now I make a motion to adjourn the meeting, the administrative session.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Elder? All is in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any members' concerns or comments before we go? Other items? Alright, now we can adjourn officially everything. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Forrester, second?
Mary Young, second?
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Honestly, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight and doing the work. Hopefully, maybe the next one will be in person, six feet apart, but we'll have to wait and see. Jay, you think it's, right now, do you have anything for the July meeting?
Um, yeah, Jay Hibansky here. My, uh, today was my day out of the office. Uh, so I will be back in tomorrow, but uh, as of noon today, we had no applications uh, for next month. So uh, when I get into the office tomorrow, Mr. Chairman, I'll give you a call and let you know.
Alright, again, I'd like to thank everybody for taking the time and allowing yourself to be seen. Notice I did not allow it. Alright, have a good evening. Have a good week. Everybody stay safe. Bye-bye.
Thank you, everybody. Bye.
Good night.